Town council meeting for Tuesday, August 16, 2016. Rebecca, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Condon.
Here.
Councilmember Lappert. Vice Mayor First. Mayor Bailey.
Yes, here. All right, and would you please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Now it's the open time for a public discussion. If anybody has comments they'd like to make to the town which is not already on the agenda, please step up to the mic, state your name and where you live, and have at it for three minutes or less. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Susan Windman, and I'm here to mention a few items. My mother lives here in Corder Madera. I don't, but I'm -- it -- what I -- can I -- should I speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
It's on, I think. I can hear you. Can anybody not hear her? We're good. Oh, we're good. We have an audiovisual person who has it both recorded, video and --
Thank you very much. So, I get a little nervous. So I'd like to talk about Paradise Drive. I'd like to talk about a development that was -- that was passed over 10 years ago and constructed at 5555 Paradise Drive, which is an assisted living residence. And there are two items, two issues that I wanted to just mention. The first one is that I applaud the town of Corder Madera for the development plans. And the second item also refer -- it is related to what I'm about to say, the first item. But the proposed -- before it was built, the building plans weren't in complete compliance with the land, and there were negotiations done, and Corder Madera decided in the negotiations to ask that there be certain number of affordable housing, I mean affordable rent, affordable slots or rooms included in exchange for approval of the building. And so this is -- this is not something so usual with assisted living residences. I don't know how familiar you are, but you know, it's -- these are typically private pay. This is not nursing home. This is not -- and they're very expensive, and the need is just increasing. And I applaud the town of Corder Madera. It's of innovative thought, no matter what your idea is of affordable housing. It's a really wonderful thing that, in my opinion, that Corder Madera did. But the second issue -- the second item that I'd like to mention is that I would like -- one of the reasons I'm here is that I would like this to be on next month's agenda for an action item, because I want to tell you something. So we're talking about affordable housing, and what that means is that for income-based, for people who are -- meet the parameters of low income, that they have a reduced rent. Now, when you live in assisted living, that's not all that you pay. There's some -- there's also payments for some additional needs, because people who move to assisted living, they have some problems. And this one in particular addresses dementia also. So they have even a separate area for people who really -- am I -- is my time up?
Yes, but you can wrap up.
So what was not -- I did a little bit of research, and I also spoke with the state. And I'm about to tell you something. The state was -- state Housing and Community Development. They were kind of disturbed when they heard this. Well, what AAGES didn't tell all of you is that they charge an entrance fee, and that goes for everybody, including the low-income people. And for example, my mother, a retired public school teacher on a pension who could never afford to buy a house, she paid $20,000 entrance fee, and she -- and her income is -- meets the low income for that, and she has one of the low-income slots. And I ask you, isn't this a little strange that there may be nine slots, and it's income-based, and to have people pay this huge fee? And they -- I don't believe that they told Corder Madera during this approval process for their building. I just find it to be kind of strange, and the state also wants to know more. And I have some suggestions for something simple that you might want to do. I hope that you decide to look into this further. I just don't feel that this is right. It is not right, and it should have been disclosed. And I hope that you put it on the next month's agenda and at least look into it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Do you want to make a comment?
Real brief. We don't want to -- now, the reason why we don't engage, just so you understand, is not because we don't have something we'd like to --
That's okay. I understand.
But under the Brown Act, we can't --
I understand.
Something that's not on the agenda.
But that's why I'm --
But we are allowed to ask a clarification question.
Okay.
Yes, I would just like to suggest to you that you call the county ombudsman.
I'm already -- I'm very, very tuned in to all this. I would not have come. I appreciate it, but I would not have come. And I'm very familiar. I've talked to all of the -- I have a master's in planning public policy and management. Just want you to know. And I've worked for San Francisco and City of Eugene, Oregon, and I've worked as an environmental consultant for top places. So I come to you with some, a little bit of education, and I'm a really fair-minded person, very much. So I hope that you decide to look into this a little further. It's really a little disturbing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Jane Levinson, 32, Town of Vista Corder Madera. There was an article in this morning's Independent Journal. I guess I brought them here. Chance of Big Marin Fire Remains High. And then on the second page, fire safety tips. And I noticed that the first safety tip is clean gutter of flammable debris. In my neighborhood where I live, I have neighbors that have had pine tree needles in their gutters for a long time, longer than a year. And I've suggested to the neighbors that they do something about it, particularly now with what's going on in California. And several of them have taken it to heart, but there's one neighbor that has not. And I -- when I saw this in the paper this morning and read this, I said to myself, I've had it. I'm going up to the fire department, and I want to talk to somebody up there to see if there's something that the fire department can do to follow up on something like this. And I did, and I met with a marshal, and he said that he would -- the first thing they do is they send a notice to the household, and then if nothing's done, they send him a second notice, and if nothing's done, then they go out and take care of it themselves and bill the homeowner. So I just wanted to let you all know that it's very important considering what's going on up in the Lake District. And although embers don't fly that distance, embers do fly, and a gutter full of pine needles is like a pile of sawdust. I mean, it's just -- it's terribly flammable. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levinson. Anyone else for public discussion open time? All right, seeing none, we see that we have no -- oh, we see we have no presentations this evening. Moving right along to town manager and council reports. David, do you have a town manager report?
Yes, I do tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, just to let you know, Judith and I had met with Mesa Ridge last week regarding the gravel lot and the negotiations with that. That seemed to stall out last April, but go on the back burner, but it's come front and center again, and we're going to have another meeting with them next week and probably agendize a closed session on that at our next council meeting. Just to let you know, that's going on in gear again. As you probably know, we started the town hall remodel. That's going well. I originally expected that to take about five weeks, but there's been some delays with getting the big quarter windows that we're going to put in on the front there. That's actually called the storefront in construction lingo, for whatever reason. So we'll probably -- it'll probably be the middle of September before we get that completed. But everything is going well with that. And then I attended a preconstruction meeting for 1421 Casa Buena today. You may remember that's a 16-unit subdivision, a condo subdivision, and that went well. They have a grading permit. They had a demo permit. They demoed the existing old houses that were there, or one house, I guess. And they'll probably get geared up on that in the next couple of weeks, so expect to see some activity there. And then Adam wanted me to mention -- he's not here. I gave him the note off, but he did want to mention Towne Vista Corridor. The staff and the town attorney are working on the ordinance revision for that, and they're expecting to go to the Planning Commission in September and to the town council in October. So we're on schedule with that. Absolutely. No delays on that one.
Okay.
And then our fire marshal, Kenny Prent, to continue on with what Ms. Levinson said, he wrote this to me. I'll just read this off. This is about the fires and our personnel there. We have a total of six personnel out of county on two separate wildfires, B.C. Davis. I won't read off all the names here, but six of them total. Five are in Lake County. They all responded early Sunday morning, and were in the heat of the battle during the time the fire went through the lower lake, so they saw some action there. Unfortunate fires up there. And then as of this morning, that fire is 4,000 acres and only 20% contained. And then we have an engineer at the mineral fire outside of Fresno, and he's serving as a line medic. That fire is 95% contained, 7,000 acres, just over 7,000 acres on that. And then for the record, I just wanted to formally thank Rebecca Smallbach, who was a Redwood High School -- she'll be a senior this year, as I introduced her to you at a prior meeting. She was serving as an intern here and was just a blessing. She helped several departments. She certainly helped Rebecca more than anybody. We had two Rebecca's here this summer. It never got confusing. And she was over at Parks and Rec. She was at Public Works, and she went to the police department for a day and went on a ride along with the police and was real thrilled with that. So she really enjoyed her time here. I think she learned a lot. I hope she learned a lot. We'll see if she ever comes back to government again. She was just a joy to be with, and I just wanted to have the record reflect that.
Thank you very much.
And that's all I have.
That's very good. Thank you, David. We appreciate your work on that. Council reports. Jim?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Carla?
First of all, August 24, the age-friendly Corder Madera and the Park and Rec have partnered, and we're putting on a tremendous presentation about Marin Villages. And I've spoken about that before. The village concept is nationwide, and it's organized for people 60 and over. You can either be a volunteer, you can avail yourself of the services, or both. And what it does is for a fee, usually it's around $365 a year, a dollar a day, but there are scholarships, so you're not confined to that number. But if you decide to participate in that way, you are able to have a multitude of services performed for free. For example, if you need a ride to the doctor, you just call a central number, you will get a ride to the doctor. If you want groceries or to be taken to the grocery store, you can do that. If you want to go to a movie, they'll take you to a movie. If you want someone to go with you to the movie, they will do that. Small household repairs, just about anything that you can think of. And the purpose of this organization is to try to do away with any kind of isolation that seniors are experiencing. It gives them an opportunity for social contact, either for someone to do something for them or in turn to be able to go out and partner in activities. For example, one of the Marin Villages has a go-to lunch once a month, and every month everybody meets at a certain restaurant for lunch. Now, what we are really gifted with is that the central Marin Police Authority is allowing age-friendly to use their 11-passenger van plus a cadet to transport anybody that needs rides. So we're really trying to go as far as we can to get this word out to everybody. Also, in turn, Marin Villages is made up of volunteers who would like to volunteer to maybe drive somebody once a week. You don't have to necessarily be confined to a time. You can just say, call one day and say, this is a convenient time for me, and if a call comes in, they'll call you. So it's really, as far as volunteering goes, it can go any amount of the spectrum that you like. And it is a tremendous organization and something that Corder Madera would really benefit from, being that close to 25% of our population is 60 and over. So at any rate, this program on the 24th is going to really let you know we're going to have somebody from the county talk about it, other villages that are successful in the county. And we are hoping to, we're just on the ground floor, of starting a Twin Cities Village. And so I really invite any of you that are interested or just want to hear what's going on to attend that. It's going to be held at 1:00 at the police facility over on Doherty. That's one thing. Number two, on August 28, and you're all invited to this. This is the Second Annual Age Friendly's Celebration of our town's non-acentarians and centenarians, those who are 90 and over. And we've already gotten a real good response from those people that are 90 and over that they will be there. And it's one that I would invite all of you to come and participate in celebrating their celebration. Everybody's welcome, and it's going to be at the rec center, community center, from 2:30 until 4:30 on Sunday, the 28th. There's going to be entertainment, refreshments. It's really going to be fun for everybody. And it was a great success last year, and we already have more people responding this year, and so I do encourage all of you to come. Okay, last thing, and this is sort of something for the council. This is in regard to Senate Bill 239, and that is the bill, the new bill that has been adopted that now involves LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission, in the consolidations of fire services. There is a chance that we will be the first jurisdiction to be involved with this. And it was introduced in February of 2015 because there had been controversy that some of these agreements that were drawn up to merge fire services in one form or another didn't produce the cost savings and the efficiencies that they had led the public to believe. And so it was adopted that this particular bill put in a last step, so to speak, and that is that LAFCO has to approve the agreements before they are ratified. And so it doesn't have anything to do necessarily with forming the JPA. That's not theirs. But it does oversee the service agreements for the fire protection. The contracts need to be reviewed and approved by LAFCO. All employee organizations, those that have anything to do with fire service, they must be noticed and before any of these agreements are submitted to LAFCO. So there again, it's the final step. It also includes the parameters for fire departments serving outside of our own fire agencies. And so it requires a fiscal analysis if 25% of the personnel are going to be called to another fire. So for example, if 25% or more of our guys are to be shifted, say, up to Lake County, this would have to go through muster first. It also allows for public participation in determining if fire services should be outsourced. And that is something that I don't think that we have anything to do with. But LAFCO also must approve mutual aid agreements. So all of a sudden, now LAFCO has stepped into new territory, and just so that we all kind of are aware of what's going on, I suggested that it might be beneficial to meet with the union people and the chiefs and sort of all get together so that everybody is on the same page in case this does involve something with Corder Madera and Larkspur. And that is it.
Thank you. Carla? Michael?
Nothing to report.
All right, very good. Let's move on then to our consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been previously discussed and don't require further discussion. They can be approved by a single motion, but if anybody from the general public or staff or fellow council members would like to remove an item, please say so. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve items five, Roman numeral one through five.
I'd like to make one comment on 5.3.
Would you like to remove it from the consent calendar?
Not really. I'd like to just quick say it.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to commend the planning commissioner, planning commissions, and the planning director for this, the rules and procedures. I know it was a real laborious effort, and the latest additions, everything I think was really great, and I thank you for that.
Okay. Would anybody from the public or anyone else like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Remove all of your items.
Second?
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert. Vice Mayor First. Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
All right, very good. Next, we turn to public hearings, of which there are none. Rolling right along to business items. We have a single substantive business item, which is seven, Roman numeral one, discussion and possible action to consider the change of the election date from November of the odd years to June or November of the even years, with a report from the famous Rebecca Vaughn, our town clerk and assistant to the town manager. Rebecca, what can you offer us?
Thank you, Mayor Bailey, for that introduction, and
You are very welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers. This evening, we have a continuation of the discussion that began on April 19. Unfortunately, at that time, we weren't aware of Senate Bill 415, which I wrote about in my staff report. Our awareness of that came about when I asked our intern, who was incredibly interested in research, to do some research on how other agencies handled the challenge of changing their election dates. And what she found was that numerous Southern California cities were writing letters in support or opposition to the Senate bill, and when she dug down further and got the text of it, she did some quick math and realized that this could very easily pertain to us and our low voter turnout. So in September of 2015, California adopted Senate Bill 415, which requires cities with especially low voter turnout, and low voter turnout is defined as 25% less than the average voter turnout for the last four state elections, to consolidate their contests with state elections. And your options for that consolidation are either June or November of even years. The law takes effect next January, and under this law, you have to have a plan in place if you qualify under those conditions. You must have a plan in place to be on an even-year track by November of 2022. Just for a quick explanation, our differential of the average of our 2014, 2012, and 2010 elections and our 2015 election was 42%, so that is significantly greater than 25%. Our average of the previous even-year elections was 74.43, and our 2015 election voter turnout was 32.09%. So during our discussions at the April 19 council meeting, staff asked -- or council asked of staff to do some research on cost and potential for voter fatigue. And the cost, we weren't able to determine as a hard and fast rule for determining whether or not costs would be decreased. The general sense is costs are decreased with the more jurisdictions you consolidate with. And when you are on a state election term, it's shared, the ballot is shared with numerous agencies. Our contests are shared with the school district. So unless someone else has a measure to place on the ballot, you generally don't have a large pool of opportunities to consolidate and conserve costs. So the other option, or the other item that staff was asked to look into was potential for voter fatigue with too many items being on a state or federal election and a municipal contest being further down the ballot, and whether or not people had a tendency to vote the top of the ticket but not necessarily vote all the way down. So I did ask Dan Miller at the Department of Elections, he is in charge of candidate and filing services. The city of Sausalito has their municipal elections in November of even years, and I asked if we could get a quick estimate for the voter turnout for Sausalito items versus how Sausalito voted for the entire ticket. And he wrote back that in the 2014 contest, voter turnout was 62.37%. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. In the 2012 presidential election, Sausalito council members were voted on by 87%. And in 20 -- in that same election, the total ticket was 87.37%. So that's a difference of .37%, which is insignificant in terms of whether or not there was voter fatigue on that part. In 2014, the total votes in Sausalito were 62.37%, and the Sausalito contest was 60.10%. So that was about 2.1% differential. So I think that that might alleviate some concerns about potential for voter fatigue, but again, it is just one municipality's experience. Our contests vary, election turnout vary each year, and you never know what you're going to get with any election. So given all the research, I came up with three potential items to consider as options. The first one was based on precedent that was set by the town in 1982, when the town wanted to move from April of even years to November of odd years. And that change came about because they wanted to find a way to save costs in the wake of Prop 13 and tax revenue reductions, and they wanted to still maintain a sense of nonpartisan nature to our election contests. So to phase that in, they kept elections in 1982 and 1984, but elected council members to three-year terms. And then following that second election in 1984, they were on an odd-year track. So then we've been November of odd years ever since. So with option number one, if you wish to discuss and recommend that, you would direct staff to draft an ordinance changing the date of the municipal elections from -- to November of even years commencing in November of 2020. And phase in this shift by electing office holders in 2017 and 2019 to serve three-year terms, expiring in 2020 and 2022. The financial impact of that is that we would have back-to-back elections in the years 2019 and 2020. The second option is to direct staff to draft an ordinance to change the date of municipal elections to November of even years commencing in November 2018, requiring the cancellation of the November 2017 municipal election, and it's extending terms of current council members for an additional year. for an additional year. Financially, we would save the cost of having an election in next coming November. And in November 2015, we spent almost $13,000 on an election. So that's, that's a cost savings. And the final option is to draft an ordinance to change the date of municipal elections to June of even years commencing in June 2018, requiring the cancellation of the November 2017 municipal elections and extending the terms of current councilmembers for an additional six months. Again, this would cancel the June 2017 elections thereby saving the cost of elections for one year. It may be more palatable to extend terms of councilmembers for just six months. But the, the potential for increased voter turnout might not be as great in June of even years than it is for June of, or for November of even years. And I can take any questions that you have regarding any of those options.
Thank you, Rebecca. That's a good thorough report as usual. Does anybody have clarification questions for Rebecca? I actually have a couple if nobody else does. Jim?
Go ahead.
No, 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 you go first.
No, I'll let you.
No, I insist. Thank you. One of the few prerogatives I have as mayor is I can in fact organize the agenda. Please go ahead.
No, you said, did you have any questions? I said, go for it. So go for it.
Do you have any questions? Okay. Michael?
No, I have no clarification.
Okay. The clarification questions that I have then are, do we have any data about the difference between the turnout in June versus November voting?
I don't have any data in front of me, I think. But I did ask Ross and Belvedere for their perceptions of the turnout in their June elections, and I believe they said their elections were regularly around 60%, low to mid 60s. I can double check that and get back to you tomorrow with, with heart numbers.
Okay. Well, it's something we can put on for the next time because we have to consider it again. Okay. The second question is, so I know Sausalito does it in even years and they do it in November. Are there, what other towns, if any, in Marin have even year elections? And is it, Ross does it as well or no?
Ross and Belvedere have June of even years. Sausalito is the only one that is November of even years.
Okay.
And then the other seven towns, eight including us, are all November of odd years.
Okay.
And I did bring this up when we had our last quarterly clerks meeting, and all the other clerks were similarly surprised and will be discussing this with their, their management and council as well.
Okay. The last question, this I think is probably for our town attorney, the famous Randy Riddle. Are there any legal prohibitions related to shortening or lengthening town councilmembers' terms?
The only legal restrictions are that you can't lengthen or shorten a term by more than 12 months. Other than that, all the options that Rebecca presented are consistent with that requirement.
I'm sorry, could you say one more time? Oh, 12 months is the, okay.
And I saw that requirement as well, and I took that to mean 365 days. And when I looked at the dates of the November 2017 election and the potential November 2018 election, I think it was a difference of 361 days. So you would be under the 365 days if you chose to extend by a year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would any member of the public like to speak to the issue? Please step up and have at it. State your name and address for the record, please.
Phyllis Metcalf, 23 Parkview Circle. This is what I do as a profession, so I'd like to have an extra minute so I can give you some background and you'll understand what I'm going to try and explain. Since 2011, the law changed and all propositions go on the November ballot. There is one qualification that a constitutional amendment can go on the ballot in June. The difference is a citizens initiative, which is when people are having you sign things when you go to Safeway, that has to get, be done by April. The legislature only has to do something 31 days before. And the legislature can put on constitutional amendments, the rejection of a statute, a bond measure, different levies and appropriations. This year, there are going to be so far 17 statewide propositions. And there's a possibility of three more referendums, two bond measures, and a reclassification of some property crimes as felonies. In addition to that, there is one countywide measure that I think it's an eighth cent, an eighth or a quarter cent sales tax for low-income preschoolers. And there are 16 other local measures in different jurisdictions. And just an example, Kenfield has three on the ballot. So that's the propositions. You have president, this is just our county and what you'll see here in Corder Madera. President, US Senator, US House, State Assembly, local judges, county supervisors. Normally, you also see the Marin Municipal Water District and Marin Healthcare District, but only the number of openings had people apply. So they're not on the ballot this year. Now, I would suggest going with the June ballot because there is fatigue. Sausalito is not a good example in the sense that, they won't be happy when I say this, it is a split council. And voters go in each side trying to get a majority, and so people get really wound up in it. We don't have that in Corder Madera. We have a collegial council. There aren't big issues that people are trying to get members recalled. So voter fatigue is going to be there. You're going to go through all of these state and national positions, you're going to go through all of the measures, and finally, you're going to get down here. If you do it in June, you have the turnout for the primary election. You see what happens in Ross, you see what happens in Belvedere.
Phyllis, how much longer do you think, do you need?
A minute?
Okay.
It's a good, healthy turnout. I think will work. I think our issues, if there is a measure, will get more attention. And yet, we are attached to state, state primary, national primary. So I really suggest that you go ahead and do it in June rather than November.
Thank you very much.
I got them all.
Anyone else?
Good evening. David Kuhnhardt, Hill Pass, Corder Madera. I'm very much in favor of the idea of squaring up Corder Madera's elections with bigger elections, whether those are June or November. I think even years is the critical thing. Because, and I, I would like to say that voter fatigue is something of a red herring. The difference between the number of votes at the top of a national ballot, let's say, and the number of votes in the bottom of the, of the ballot is insignificant compared to the difference between the number of votes you get in an even year June, even year November versus an odd year. We are depriving ourselves of having the consent of the governed if we keep going with the odd year elections. If we go for those, those years, voter fatigue actually can, can be played out in the following way. Oh, there's another election already? And what is it? Is, do I get to vote for Senator? No? It's just, okay, well, then I'm not going to do it now. But if there is an opportunity to vote for local issues and local candidates, when there are others that more people care about, they will definitely dial in and focus in on those. Fact, June 7th this year, Marin County had the second highest voter turnout of any county in California, 67%. The only one that was higher was a very small population county in the Sierra. Great news. And we have very good turnout. So that June primary, when there is something that really matters to voters, would be a good time to have local contests added, assaulted in as well. I, I think we should be, I personally feel that we should be bigger in our hope about what citizens can take on on the length of a ballot than we should be concerned about somehow maintaining the preciousness of a small, tiny, nonpartisan, only local, which is more expensive, I think, in the aggregate. So keep going.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Jennifer Larson, Willow Avenue. I think June sounds like a great idea. Potentially, November also sounds like a good idea to square it up. What I don't think would be a good idea is to extend anybody's term by any length of time. I think that doesn't seem fair for the people that voted in the last election, voting for a four-year term. And I don't think it seems fair for anybody that is planning to run for council in a certain time period to potentially have to extend that wish by another six months or a year, especially when we have the option to square it up perfectly well on the 2022 timeframe.
Can I ask you one question? What do you think about shortening terms?
I think anything that is retroactive and changes what people voted for when they voted, we shouldn't do since we have the option not to do that.
Okay, thanks. Would anybody else like to offer anything? Okay. Seeing none, I will call it back to council. Now, let me remind everybody and also for the benefit of the public, this is not supposed to be an action item. This is simply a discussion and we give direction. Is that right, Rebecca?
Correct. What I'm hoping is that you'll see something you like in one of these three options or create a hybrid of your own and direct staff to bring that back at a later date with the draft of an ordinance to introduce. And I think the timeframe that we could reasonably do that would be the second meeting in September. I think we could have an ordinance ready by then. So not immediately, but, but relatively soon.
Okay. All right. Who would like to go first? Michael?
I'm just, what surprised me was that it's the Senate bill, you know? So we have no choice, apparently. I guess what I have against this is all of it, is that no matter, I was raised in a country where everybody was required to vote, and they made you stick your finger in an inkwell to prove to the police and everybody that yes, you cast your ballot. The idea being to show some sort of unanimity. And those countries are the ones that elect the Hugo Chavezes of the world. So volume does not necessarily equate to a better electorate or even better politicians. It's just, it gives, what it does is, it allows activism to have a concentrated effort for their advertising dollars in the political functions of even the smallest cities. So if they know that they can pull all their money together for a particular item that might be particular to Corder Madera, they know all they have to do is wait and they can dump it with everything else and it'll affect us. This is just another attempt to manage the lives of the smaller cities. This has got nothing else to do with it. No matter what you do, 15, 20% of the electorate knows what they're voting for, the rest of them vote for haircuts. And that's how it'll be, and that's how it'll always be. I'm proud of the 300 and some votes that came to us. I believe that those 300 and some votes that voted on the last one were informed voters who read everything about it. We were to have 1,000 people voting, they would come in and vote for the last thing they read on nextdoor.com. And that's not something that I think is a great idea. So I hate all of it, but I'll have to go with the, to stay as far away from the fray, the sideshow that we're about to have this November, which is not an election, it's nothing more than, you know, this WWF, the dummy against the, the other dummy. So I'd like to stay away from that as much as possible and keep it to June, if possible.
Did you say the dummy against the other dummy?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, no. Why? Did you think that I'm a big Trump guy or something? No, 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 please.
I just wanted to.
Let me clarify that right now. That's a dummy voting against another dummy.
There was a moment of meditation.
Where did it?
Okay. But wait, wait, before we move on, guys, let me just clear, so June over November, what do you think about like term length? Like, do we make the next one?
No, I mean, I think, I, I understand what, what the citizen was saying, and there's truth to that, of course. And I would leave that up to the mechanics of how we function here. If it creates a big problem by not extending or reducing, then I think we should just do that in order to make it all fit. I, I don't think the citizens would have a problem. And by the way, I don't want to be here another six months, but it does, it sounds like if we go with June, that might be what happens. And if, if you say that to me, then I'll say, okay, fine.
So the, the next, the next election will happen at the normal time, but it will be for a shortened term?
Right.
Is that the one you're going for?
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Rebecca? Is that the way that works or are we getting?
No, 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 the extension of six months. It's a six-month extension for the 2017.
If we phased it in, you would be looking at terms of two and a half years. Well, I guess you could do three and a half years. You could do three and a half years.
Yeah.
We could do an option one with ending up with a June election.
Okay. I'm sorry. Which of you two want to go next? Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I guess I will.
Okay. Oh, you have a decision tree.
Yeah. I guess first, if there's a choice between extending current council term or modifying the length of future council terms, I would, I would support modifying future council terms. In terms of the date of the election, I believe June would be preferable for the reasons that have been given already. But also, on the odd-numbered years, is when we do our two-year budgets. And I believe if the, we have a June of the even year elections, the person would take office in July, and that would give them a whole year to get up to speed so that when they're, when they have to address the budget in June of the odd-numbered years, they'll, they'll have the opportunity to be fully up to speed. In terms of what we do for the modifying future council terms, we could either do a stub term, which is basically three years, or do an extended term, which is, you know, five years. And I don't have strong feelings between those two.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Carla?
Okay. First of all, my feeling in extending anybody's term for an extra year, I'm not comfortable with at all. I, I think that it's almost like we voted ourselves an extra year without an election. And so I find that problematic. I, I can see, and I don't think it would be that objectionable to the public being that this has now all of a sudden become a mandate. When you first brought it up, it was just, oh, you know, I never thought of that. And then it comes before us that we really don't have a choice in the matter. And so I think that the option of a June election and extending us six more months would probably be the, the best alternative. I certainly am opposed to voting myself an extra year. And, and in that respect, I totally agree with, with Jennifer Larson, that, that that is just really not appropriate. So I could see that actually, with the knowledge that this has now become enforceable, that the easiest probably would be to extend for the six months.
Is that it? Is that it, Carla?
Ending up here or here?
Oh, ending, oh, I'm sorry, that we end up in, in June of?
June both year, but.
Yeah.
Two and a half years.
Go, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mayor Bailey?
Oh, I'm sorry, that it would be the, well, the four and a half. For, for us, it would be four and a half.
All right, go ahead, Rebecca.
I was just working on rewriting option one to end up at a June of even years. And the unfortunate part of that is that we would have back-to-back elections in 2019 and 2020, only it would be November of 2019 and June of 2020. So we'd have a six-month period where in a constant state of filing and elections. So that, that could get complicated. But that, that's basically the only change that would, that would take place. But that, that's basically the only change that would, that would take place, is if you took option one but wanted to phase it in with voting office holders to three and a half-year terms, you would have an election in November of 2015 and in November of 2017, or, yeah, 2017 and November of 2019. And those office holders would have terms that would expire in April of, or in June of 2020 and 2022. And finally, you would be on the even-year cycle as of 2020.
Okay, that's not perfectly clear. Let me come back. Go ahead, David. We were going to answer some.
I think what Councilmember Condon was referring to is changing number, option two to June of 2018.
That's option three.
Right.
Well, oh, I was thinking.
And then you would have four-year elections after that. Every June of, of, it'd be a June of a, of an even year.
Right.
Each time after that. So yes, it is option three, but, you know, I keep looking at two, but it's the same thing. It blends two into three.
Okay.
I would just, not that I'm recommending anything here at all.
No, but, but since, but since we have gone for more information, if I will, should I ask if anybody, can I get a motion to reopen public comment? No? Anybody?
Yes.
I have your problem.
Okay, is that a second?
One second.
Okay, go ahead, take a vote. Now, let's do it. Because we had a motion from Jim and a second from Carla to reopen public comment. I thought I saw a hand out there. Yes. Although I'm sure she'll be very quick with, to the point with her comments.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert. Vice Mayor first. Mayor Bailey.
Yes. So would any member of the public like to efficiently and to the point comment on something that was just raised?
Comes down to kiss, keep it simple, stupid. Option three is the easiest to do. It is easiest for staff. It is easiest for people to understand. It is an extension of six months on a term. If you don't want to serve the six months, you can retire early and they can fill your seat for six months. I think Randy will tell you that in this state, when there have been these changes, there have been additions onto terms. I can't think of any that I've ever seen in the demographic studies I've done where anybody has shortened a term. So you don't want to set precedent. But seriously, you don't do it in November of 17. You just extend the period until June, June of 18. And then you're in line for 2022, et cetera. It's not a bunch of maneuvering, changing this one's term to three and a half, and this one's to four and a half. And by the time you're done, you've wasted more time than necessary.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else from the public? Okay. I will close the public, bring it back to the council.
I'm going to stay with what I said. It was a six-month extension, June even years.
Okay, nobody's heard my comments yet.
No, but just so you, so it's clarified, so that we're on number three.
Okay. Here's what I would say. I don't think that we ought to do anything that affects our current terms for better or for worse. I had been in favor of truncating, shortening our current terms, or at least my own term, to get us on track, and that the next people who get elected would then be on track, and so on and so forth. It's not realistic for the very next cycle to be shortened because there's not enough time to, like, kind of do that. But I would be willing to shorten mine, and that would kind of catch it up. But as I'm kind of working through it, that's not analytically different. It's like a dereliction of duty, an abandonment of duty, which is not analytically different from artificially giving us extra time. So I would say what the five of us ought to do is stick with the existing term, but then beginning with the next election, at the next election, the term of the, anybody elected in that election ought to be just for the amount to get us onto a, an even-year election cycle. So if that's three and a half years, or two and a half years, or three, I don't, my math, like. Okay, well, three and a half then. What would normally be a four-year election cycle would be a three and a half-year election cycle, which doesn't strike me as dramatically different from what they'd have gotten anyway. And then, you see what I mean? So we are ordinarily up for election in November, yes? So we would simply just be for a three and a half-year term expiring in the June of when that term would otherwise have expired instead of November. Does that make sense?
No. Because, because our term is up in November of 17.
Right, so next year, your term's up. So I would say that whoever runs in that term, which is in November of 2017, ought to be elected for a term of three and a half years instead of four, which means that their term would be ending in June of?
2020.
2020 instead of November of 2020. And then from June of 2020 forward, your cycle is forever uneven years. Then, hang on, and then two years later, when I'm up of 2017.
19 to 22.
19, sorry. Who's ever in my cycle would only run for three and a half years term, and that would be up in June of, yes, right? And consequently, am I doing the math right, or am I doing the math wrong?
No, you're, you're correct. But that was what I was saying would lead us to having an election in June of 2019, or November of 2019 and June of 2020.
That doesn't offend me, because it would get us on track in a way that would be publicly, republicized. What's it?
I don't think the math works.
Now, the math would have to be two and a half years.
I think you end up being with two and a half-year terms, which you can't do.
Why not?
Because it says you cannot shorten a term by more than a year.
No, 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 but the new term.
You have four-year terms.
You mean because our, our council rules and regulations require four-year terms?
Well, this, right. State law requires four-year terms.
Can't we get an exception for one election cycle or something?
No, you're really kidding.
No?
No, without going to the legislature.
When it's just a six-month.
I don't, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of increasing our terms.
Because you can always step out. Something, we can always appoint somebody.
Okay.
I think that's, that's what I was alluding to. That's the simplest one. That, yes.
So then, in 2020, why are we worried about what's simple?
Because, because there's so much work involved, we talked about, it's just in ways.
Okay. Okay, I think that we've had discussion on this. Rebecca, here's what I'd like to see for the next time we bring it back to the council is, can you provide us one option, which I guess is what's existing, number three, but can you provide an alternate option, which begins at the, when our current cycle concludes, what is the, is there any way to set it up so that the beginning of the next, that cycle, that we can get ourselves on track as quickly as possible without extending terms? And maybe the way to do it is to say that that election cycle is not for a four-year term, but for a four and a half-year term.
Right.
So the next, the next people who run for election are running for, like, kind of a super-long term.
Yeah.
So it would be subject to voter participation, and whoever they get elected, it's well-known to the public, they're electing them for four and a half years.
And this would just be for one term?
Correct.
Where option one currently affects two terms?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that, that would be the way I, I would probably go for, only because, just for all the obvious reasons. Randy, you about to say something?
No, I'm just wondering whether you may.
So it's here.
We'll have to sit down and work this out. That's fine. I think so the folks elected in 2017 would serve until June of 2022.
Yes.
Right.
And the folks, and you're going to have an election in 2019 then?
Yes.
A normal election in 2019, except it wouldn't be for four years, it'd be for four and a half.
They would serve until 2024.
Correct.
And then what's the 17?
What's 17 plus four and a half?
2017, no.
What would be for a four and a half, that, that election cycle would be for a four and a half-year term.
Okay, so it, it wouldn't?
Expire in November. We expire the June of the following, so instead of?
Instead of extending our terms, we'll extend the next.
Extend their, their terms, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Very salamonic, sir.
Okay. All right, very good. Do you feel like you have direction? No? I can see the grimace.
I think I got it.
No, 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 no. Let's see, let's, because she's going to have to execute it, so Rebecca, go ahead. Any question you like is fine.
Yeah, we need a calendar. So 2017, you're talking about potentially electing office holders to terms of four and a half years.
Yes.
Expiring in June.
Of 22.
Yeah, June of 22.
Yeah. On November, in November of 2017, three people will be elected to terms that will end in June of 22.
Okay. And then in 2019, they'd be June of 2024.
Correct.
Yes.
Is there any ambiguity in that?
No.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you for the discussion, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, can I ask one question?
Yeah, of course.
Oh, that, that makes it in time, doesn't it?
Yes, you've already laid the groundwork for, for meeting the.
It was a start date had to be before 2022.
Correct.
Okay.
You had to be on an even-year schedule by November of 2022, and you'll be on an even-year schedule by June of 2020.
You know, another advantage of that is that we don't cost the town any money by extra election.
Right, and then there wouldn't be the back-to-back elections that were causing me fear. So would you like to schedule one more discussion on this, or would you like a, a, an ordinance to be introduced, and you can discuss it at that time, with an ordinance to look at?
It'd be a first reading, anyway.
It would be a first reading, correct.
A first reading, and that way, if we want to change it on the spot, and then we do it again, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, why don't you presume we're heading in a direction that, that, that we might be able to vote on at that next, we can make it an action item at the next meeting, whatever meeting you have it for. I'm sorry, we haven't opened it to the public, so I appreciate the effort, but we're actually not. So does that feel like it's clear to you?
I believe it's clear.
So one way to do it would be to do a staff report, which provides as an exhibit an ordinance, which it could be the first reading of, and which would allow for it under the scenario that I was describing. If you'd like in your staff report, if you find that the town council, in discussing that first reading, is unhappy with that ordinance, you could provide as an alternate option two, what is currently listed as, you know, number three on here, and we could, on the spot, change that thing and revisit about what the ordinance should say and when. But it allows us the efficiency to get it done in a single meeting, what, you know, try to get this thing underway. We are, because of the protracted and persistent efforts of our populace to interject themselves even when expressly told and given multiple opportunity to say whatever they'd like, and in fact, opening it for that benefit, still, they want to offer additional comments. So in recognition and with love in my heart for our people, I still think that this would be a good way to proceed. Okay? All right. Let's move on to item seven, Roman numeral two, review of the draft town council for Does anybody have any comments? All right. Hang on one second. Okay. Item seven, Roman numeral three. Okay, so, yeah, that's not an action item. Then item seven, Roman numeral three, approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes of the meeting from August 2?
I do just one. On page 10, line 35, it's supposed to be on August 28. H. Friendly, Corder Madera sponsors the party. And I may have misspoke. I don't know, but it is August 28. Second?
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor first. Mayor Bailey.
You know, I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't here. I recognize that I think technically, it's, it's possible to vote on a meeting minutes for which you have not attended, but I'm going to abstain since I wasn't there and don't really know what was said. All right, very good. I believe that finishes our agenda, and I will now adjourn the meeting.